I think we need to have those discussions. But if not, I mean, if not, it's our responsibility on the site. It's not their responsibility to provide one, even though we may like them.
Has the county given us any indication they want something in return for us?
No, we haven't talked to them. We haven't negotiated anything.
Okay.
So.
Other than just improving the site and they said, you know.
But they haven't said, hey, we want.
Well, back in the original addendum, when we changed it, it just said allowing us to leave it there until we find a different location at some point in its life.
Oh, way back when Ed and I first talked about this, I mean, I made the comment and I have to believe it's true. The recycling started when I was the executive director of Alliance for Economic Success. And back then, which I think has been consistent, it was always the governmental entity's responsibility to do where that's located. So I guess I'm just feeling. I mean, to me, the issue is, do we want to enter into the agreement? Or recycling and then know that it's our responsibility and perhaps we'll be able to keep it at the same site? Or do we not? That, that to me is the real question, but it's not done.
I feel like we've provided consideration in the form of improving their site of the parking pad. And we've abandoned looking for the site that we were going to purchase right next to it because we've got this site. And there really aren't that many suitable sites that are available. So I think the chances of finding one are potentially unlikely or costly.
Well, I.
See that language.
I think if they get the grant, they're going to move it to the. Brokerage.
That's great. I mean.
So I mean, that takes care of a lot of this. Well, if they get the grant to do it and if that happens, but that's just under.
Is that nine mile row?
I don't care what we do, we gotta do something.
I would agree.
We maintain it. We don't get rid of recycling, right?
No.
Okay, just making sure. Don't want to misunderstand.
Is recycling maybe going to, just a question? Is it going to become so where it's truly recyclable, not just all thrown in there mixed up together? Is it going to be?
No, I can't even answer that, so.
Okay.
I don't know if the board, anyone here could answer that. So what does the board wish to do then? You, you don't think incorporating that into that would suffice, obviously? Because you have a different wordage.
I prefer my language over this language. Because I can see a situation where this language is in there and the county, for some reason, comes back in six months and says, oh, yeah, got to get your bins out of there. We're, we're done and we don't have a site for it. And I, I don't want to be in that position.
What happens if that language is put in there and the county says, you're not going to sign it that way?
Then I guess we need a discussion because the other language would be until a permanent site is located and if we haven't located one, it's going to stay where it is. Until they just say, until they say, okay, we're going to kick you off the site now. But I want a little protection for the township taxpayers.
Which would be two years, roughly.
That site hasn't been used for anything.
Well, it's.
In an open field.
Right, it's been a field forever.
Yeah.
And I just wonder if we say something like that, the effect of leaving it there for the life of the agreement, which is two years. And we're open for a discussion on. I don't, I don't know what they're looking for, if, if they're not using it and it's not something that is. Like an emergent need for the county to have that spot available to them, but something that we can use, great. But if they're looking for a hundred dollars a month or something, we should, we just got to negotiate with them and that.
They're not looking for anything.
Oh. I don't know. The last meeting, it seemed like there was something that I was missing that they wanted. Okay.
They want us to sign this agreement.
Okay.
Which we haven't signed.
Right.
So the argument was at the time, this addendum actually extended the agreement, well.
I think that's.
I think that's what you're talking.
There was a philosophical disagreement as to whether the interlocal agreement was valid right now.
Correct.
And then rather than continue that, our attorney supported our position, but the county's not taking that position. So it's like, okay, let's just cut through it. Let's deal with the new interlocal agreement and move forward. So that, I think, is what.
Okay.
Maybe you kind of missed because you weren't involved then.
Right. Earlier.
So they're just pushing, the addendum is, okay, you did it, that got us through to the end of the year, but now it's past the end of the year. We want to do an interlocal agreement and if not.
As, as of January one.
Right, and if not, then we're going to pull the bins.
That makes sense.
Which are still there today, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay. They were there yesterday, so. Well, that was a board wish to do.
I, I wish to sign the contract, I don't care what it says.
What do y'all want?
What does it actually say?
It doesn't define, it says we're supposed to come up with a place to put the.
Are they charging us for it, the site?
No. You know, I think Ed's point, the consideration, when you've got ten thousand, like ten thousand plus dollars worth of.
About seventy-five hundred, but somewhere around there.
Pretty decent lease basis of a lease agreement to me for at least two years.
Yeah. And after two years.
It's going to be null and void anyways, we'll have to start over. The only thing you can do is somebody tells me, we want to do that and I turn this in and you, and you see what they say. I mean, that's all we're dealing with here. I didn't talk to anybody about at the county other than telling them not to pull the bins if they could wait till we had a meeting and talked about it.
There's a couple other blanks in this agreement, do we know how many bins are there?
Six.
Six, no. Okay, so we should pencil that number.
We should, it should say six bins.
Do you want to do that?
Well, they want to know that.
The minimum.
It's a minimum number.
Sometimes you have four, sometimes you have one.
It's a minimum bin. They want to know what the minimum bin is. The line is not in the old agreement. It is in this agreement, so everyone wants to, argument or discussion has been always about the township's responsibilities to provide appropriate site for recycling bins. The township is responsible for keeping the recycling area mowed and clear of snow. I think that was in the old one.
Yes.
But the part about the responsibility for us to provide appropriate site was not in the old agreement.
No, it wasn't. Though the inter, the old interlocal agreement was like one page.
The old one was one, yeah.
The thing that they changed, I thought, was that they had to approve the new site. Is that in there?
Well, their, their draft that they sent us, Shelley, didn't look anything like the one we assigned two years ago. It was.
Right.
Rewritten to address their frustration with this issue.
Their frustration with this whole thing is that we haven't found a new facility, a new site over the past probably ten years. That's their frustration.
But part of the frustration there is it never said it was the township's responsibility. I'm just telling you, the old thing didn't say that years ago.
Public Act says that.
I read the Public Act with you, Shelley. I'm sharing that and yeah, it's very clear, it's the township's responsibility to.
Exactly.
We have found a spot, so.
So that's their frustration is that this board, or as many people as it's been through, has never settled on a site.
We settled on a site till we hauled it out of here. It's been here for years, right? And we just, it's just been the last, isn't it a year? And not even, correct?
Been over a year, you moved it. You moved it in twenty twenty-three, when you paved.
When we paved, so it's been over a year. So we, there was a spot all the other years was provided by the township, which was right here.
No, it wasn't.
Well, no, it was up here, it was at the school, I'm sorry, it moved all over the place, that's true.
School, it's township, I mean, it's a village and then here.
And then here, so. And now over there, but, and no one has said it can't stay there for, until we find someplace else, but. What do you guys want to do with Ed's language? You want to add that in here and see if they would okay that? Or do you add some other language or just sign this the way it is or?
That we should get a motion on the floor and vote for it because I, I'm getting a sense here that we're not going to have a unanimous decision. So I think we're going to just continue to debate our positions. I, I want to sign it without anything asserted and then separately. Have conversations with the county to have an interesting agreement property. And Ed would prefer to have a language in there now. So I think we make a motion one way or the other and vote on it and move forward.
Okay. So, so am I making a motion or?
Sure, I will, I'll make a motion and we vote on it as you have written it. When you enter, enter local agreement for recycling. With the language added that you added, the county has reached to allow recycling bins at the PCA recycling trailer to be located at its present site, which is the address. Until the permanent site is identified. Just adding that and adding the four or six bins, I think pretty much covers it.
Shouldn't we add something in there about?
Well, you've got something in.
Okay.
So we've got second.
I need a second before you can discuss the question. And no one's making a second, I guess we're not discussing it.
That all died.
Does anyone else have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do the interlocal agreement substituting. The county agrees to allow the recycling bins at PCA recycling trailer to be located at its present site at fifty-six seventeenth John Street for the life of the agreement. Instead of what's previously proposed.
Okay, is there a second on that? Okay, discussion. Is there any discussion?
Should we add something about entering into a negotiation with the county to potentially make that the site?
That was that language. Was that language, he's putting that in there.
The life of the green.
For the, okay.
Basically, he says that for the life of the green or whether, I don't know if they'll go for, I have no idea what they're going to say.
At worst, they can say it's not.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's about it.
I think they might buy this.
It's two years.
I hope so, I'm stuck in part of it.
I, I mean, you only discussed, I have been a vote against the motion from, by it previously stated. It's not that I'm against recycling, I just think it should be a separate agreement. This is what they understand.
Okay. And just any more discussion? Motion made, motion seconded. Bob, how do you vote?
Okay.
Ed?
Yes, yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Cindy?
No.
David, yes.
Sign the paper, Dave.
It's got to be re-typed about when you.
Yeah. It has to be re-typed.
Can I get a copy of the motion back down the road?
Won't you appear?
I can't write it that bad. And I don't want to quote you wrong.
Duty is responsibility is a compensation of the clerk. Cindy and I, again, met on this and had a discussion and I think we both came to the same conclusion, but. They're not going to touch it. And just leave it be the way it is and it's been a, be kind of the. You do more when you're here and everybody helps out and you're kind of on the honor system or whatever you want to call it. There you go.
Well, in feeling that if we had dealt with it.
Before.
Prior to the election where we dealt with all the position.
Be a little bit different.
Perhaps I'd have felt differently, but at this point, you know, you just hope that people applying for the position are taking it in a spirit of public service. And in the spirit of what has been created by everybody else's actions and well.
I just gave it to you. This guy right here. What? She wants to know who to blame and who the clerk is. You can blame anything you want on me.
You were appointed, right? You were enlisted.
It's kind of like a digger itself, wasn't it?
Yes. And is there going to be another election or is he going to be, yes, there will be.
Here, wait a minute, we're, let's finish talking about the duties first, so we can explain all that. So that's, my opinion, that's whatever you guys want to do though, it's up to you, that's why it's on this agenda. You think you want to try and tackle something before appointing somebody else or whatever.
My personal opinion, I think everybody knows it. Locally anyway, I don't want to open Pandora's box. I don't want to start rearranging anything. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Okay.
And I don't see it's broken.
Okay. Matt? Awesome, Ed?
I, I just want to correct the record that this, if you were to do this, it is perfectly legal to do it. It's done in communities all across the state, there's ways to do it. And I'm not suggesting that we need to do it, I'm saying this was in, this work session is being held because there was a problem. An individual held the clerk's position, said, yep, I'm not doing anything that's not statutory or any of the things that the previous clerk used to do. So this was to discuss, okay, that's an issue, how does that give results? And it doesn't sound like, what I'm hearing, that there's any appetite to split that and I'm okay with it either way. Just know it could be an issue down the road, could be an issue for any elected official down the road. As Shelley pointed out, everybody here is doing more than what their statutory duties are because we don't have full-time staffing for employees. So that's, that's what the genesis of this was.
That's why, who said it was illegal, did somebody say?
There was a comment made that it's illegal and it's not.
Oh, no, it's not illegal.
From, what I said is, from my opinion, treating similar situations differently. If you do it for the clerk, you're not for the other people, which is the fourteenth amendment.
So if somebody makes a motion and we continue down that road, I'm going to move on from that. Done? Done, okay. Clerk's position, Bob was reappointed, his, his term expired as the appointed clerk, January first.
No.
No.
No, it was, it was in the.
December.
When the election.
No.
She was elected, I'm sorry.
Let me start over.
Okay.
Bob was appointed. Temporary clerk and that term ended December thirty-first.
Right.
That's true.
The new clerk did not take oath of office by January first, so that becomes a vacancy. Bob then was reappointed as clerk at our meeting and he is the clerk right now.
Congratulations.
And his term would run till two years from now. If in fact, he runs, that term would run till the next election, next two-year election.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, if in fact he stayed. I'm just saying that that's the way the term is. Now, we have solicited applications for a new clerk and they're supposed to be in by the end of the.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth and we'll, out of that looking. If in fact we appoint a new clerk, then Bob would resign.
Yes, he would.
And I do think the motion that we made when we reappointed him said we were reappointing him until his successor was.
Correct.
May or may not be found, it's a two-year term, but I didn't want to say that. So if you're asking, so if you want, the clerk's position is now being, accepting applications.
Until the twenty-fourth of January.
Uh huh.
Okay.
If we don't get them, or don't appoint somebody, then Bob's, I guess, staying up till he quits.
It's just like recycling.
He is like a recycling.
Who was the lady that was called the ballot?
She actually has a location. Amber, Amber Settlemeyer.
Amber won, Amber registered to run, decided not to run, but it was too late to get her off the ballot.
Right.
The ballots that are even printed. So she won the election.
Well, sure, she would.
There was no one else running.
That's right, there was no one else.
You have one vote, you won.
No, even though she didn't want to run, it was too late to remove, so that's where that's at. So public comment again? I don't know if that explains the position, but that's. So Bob has graciously said to stay till, he probably has had enough.
Why don't you explain to the public what the process you all voted in on how we're going to select the new clerk? Because my guess is they probably don't know that. That they have till the twenty-fourth and then you're going to.
I'm sorry.
Reviews and I think the board might, would like to know that.
You kind of just said it.
You have until the fourteen.
Well, you and I disagree on that.
No, the prosecutor and you disagree on that.
Probably.
But that, I would still like it to come from you.
We're accepting applications for the position till the twenty-fourth. We'd like to have them in so we can review them and schedule. Interviews until we appoint somebody at our meeting, which is February twelfth.
February twelfth, okay.
I mean, that's the game plan. So with Shelley speaking, obviously, you have forty-five days after that office became open to appoint somebody. My opinion is, we have appointed somebody to be the clerk. So I don't have to.
But he's reluctant.
It doesn't matter, he's there.
I mean, reluctant.
There's a lot of people that are serving reluctantly, that doesn't mean they're not serving. He accepted the position, it's not like he's not the clerk, he is the clerk, okay?
Okay.
It had to be fulfilled within forty-five days of the vacancy, which was January first. He's the clerk. If no one applied and we kept Bob, he'd still be the clerk, he's been appointed.
Yeah.
I don't have to.
Why are you going ahead and getting more?
Because Bob doesn't want to stay.
There you go.
To be, to be blunt about it, right, Bob?
Yeah, as blunt as you can be, yep.
Yeah.
I'm ready to go.
Exactly.
I didn't run for reelection for a reason.
No, exactly.
Okay. But it doesn't mean he's not the clerk.
You can talk to the prosecutor.
I don't talk to those guys. They're fine.
Paperwork will be filed for an election.
I don't know how you can have an election when you have a clerk.
It's on you. And you'll have to pay for it. The taxpayers and the Nakama will have to pay for it.
See, fundamentally, I disagree with that statement.
Township Association disagrees with that.
Yeah, they do. They do.
Oh, interesting.
So what you're telling me by that statement, just to go on and discuss this, means that you won't allow us to have Bob be the clerk?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the prosecutor says it's abuse of democracy.
By doing what?
What you're doing.
By appointing Bob?
I'm not going to argue with you.
See?
Prosecutor should argue with you.
Possible for the prosecutor to put it, I mean, seriously, his opinion in writing?
It's not, it's not an issue. It'll be appointed by.
No, I understand, but I, I, I. I'm not. Is it possible for him to put that in writing so that, because I'd rather not pay for an election than we don't?
I think if it got to that point, that we didn't have applicants or we interviewed applicants and we didn't think that they were acceptable and.
Just hire somebody.
And the county was going to force us to have a special election, that we would get our attorney involved because I agree, I don't.
Yeah.
There's a statutory requirement and there's a prosecutor's opinion.
County that would be.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm just saying it out of curiosity. I'd like to read the prosecutor's opinion.
I don't.
Yeah, and I don't think it ever comes. It's just stupid. It's just the discussion that.
Um, have you gotten any applications yet? So there, are they coming in? Okay, so you have one coming in.
That's not your name, right? Is that in your name, right?
I pulled out, I pulled one out in France and put Bob's name.
Just so they know that there are people sending us. Okay.
I use my, my right hand to make it look sloppy.
Are we done? Anyone else for public comment? I'm sorry, that's where I was at. No? Yes?
I think I missed the whole point on how the clerk is actually paid.
Monthly.
No, biweekly salary.
I'm sorry, biweekly. We used to get, we used to get monthly.
Okay.
So they split it up. You just get paid twice a month.
Okay.
That's how you get paid, by salary. It's a salary.
Because people might want to know that also.
Salary based upon whatever we allocated last year, which I can't tell you what it is off the top of my head, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, something like that.
Anywhere near what she should make.
Well, he made, or he, or he.
I can tell you that for a fact.
Yes.
So is it the annual amount split up for biweekly or is it biweekly, but they're still paid hourly?
No, hourly rate. It's all, it's all salary.
Annual salary for that.
Just an annual salary.
No benefits, but they're working full-time.
Well, you get, you get a car allowance, cell phone, health insurance, 401K.
There's no benefits except for fighting. It's not, you work the hours needed to get the job done. It's not a full-time version.
It could be.
Is it twenty-four hours to be charged?
No, no, no.
If there's an election.
No, no.
There's a huge amount.
Yeah, no, no, it don't. It's three and a half days. The office is open three days. That's not, you're never going to get all the work done.
That's by our choice, though.
That is.
It's not state.
No, that's our own choice.
Okay.
Yep.
You have to have the hours to do the job, right?
You have to do the hours to do the job.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Nobody nor.
Just like any.
What is the annual salary?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Twenty hours of work.
Twenty.
I don't have it off the top. I can look it up.
It's like twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-six.
Somebody might want to know that, too.
If they asked us that, no one's asked that question.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I thought it was twenty-eight thousand something.
We can look it up and all if you'd like to know.
I'd have to look up the resolution.
Yeah.
I mean, there are people sitting here maybe that would even like to know if it's well worth even putting in a resume.
What do you want to know?
How much it is.
Twenty-six for the clerk and twenty-five for their clerk.
Annual?
In change.
Is that annual or hourly?
Annual. There's no hourly rate.
Much, I'm sorry.
There's no hourly rate.
It's wasted. Okay, fine. I'm sorry, I do pay also. I'm constantly recalculating back in. But I don't think that's really a decent way for any of the clerks within the state. I think it's low. Totally angry. I think we should also, maybe for the upcoming year reassessing, maybe something.
The budget will be discussed and they'll discuss raises in February and March.
Okay, because they probably all need.
Because they should, I agree.
I begin to like you. It's just that right there.
Bob's going to say, you got to stay.
Does anyone else have anything under public comment?
What's your number, Bob? What's your number? We need to know this right now.
Okay, I'm adjourning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like an auction.